We have an incredible lineup tonight, so we're going to kind of skip past some of the usual housekeeping. We will do one thing before we get started, and that is if we have representatives here either from the San Diego Police Department or the San Diego Fire Department, please let me know and we can have you step up right now. Okay. Well, it sounds like they weren't able to be here tonight. That happens frequently when they have to go out on calls. So if they do arrive later, we'll fit them in at whatever point in the program. So let's get started. We're going to skip the approval of minutes, the president's report, and we're going to go right into our guests who are amazing. We're going to begin tonight with the new mayor of the city of San Diego, Mayor Todd Gloria, who has a lot of wonderful information for us on his projects and his hopes for the city. And we're all ears. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Hello. Good evening. Hello, Mayor Mesa. Hello, Barry. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. And can I just right at the top say thank you for accommodating our police officers and firefighters right at the top of your meeting? You well know that they are extremely busy. They are dragged in all kinds of directions. I want them to be at your meetings as much as possible. I really appreciate you respecting their time. That's just a classy thing for y'all to do. I expect nothing less than Mayor Mesa. I know that you have a full agenda today, and I don't want to take away from Mayor Mark College, from Wesley, or from Tanya's presentations. I know that those are really important. But when I was running for this job, many, many, many of you shared that you wanted to see the mayor up close and in person, or what passes for in person these days during the pandemic. And I really want to follow through with that and just being available as my schedule permits and to the extent that it lines up with your meetings. You are well cared for by Michaela Volk from my team, who is normally here and who provides me weekly updates with community input. So rest assured that your thoughts, your concerns, your priorities are shared with me on a frequent basis. But there's no replacing coming in person. So thank you for letting me take just a little bit of your agenda this evening to, as you mentioned, say a couple of things about what's going on at the city and then if time permits, I'm happy to answer some questions if that's appropriate. And again, if that manages and respects your time this evening. I'll just say that I'm about 120 some odd days into this job, and I'll tell you that I spend the most of my time on COVID. Not surprisingly, it's the highest priority in our city, beating this virus and getting back to some level of normalcy. I'm proud to tell you that those very same firefighters are, we were talking about a moment ago, all of them have been authorized to give the COVID-19 vaccine, and they have been providing that on a regular basis out of our municipal gym in Babo Park. They've been doing it at pop-up events in some of the zip codes in our city that are hardest hit by the pandemic. They've even been doing mobile efforts in communities, a lot of them up in the northern part of our city where we have high concentrations of seniors, particularly senior homes where we need to get the vaccine out. To bring our infection rates down. We're now in the red here. We hope to be in the orange here shortly. And that's all credit to collaboration between the county, who's the leader on vaccinations, and the city who's trying to play an assistive role. Everyone that the vaccine process opens up for everyone 16 and older on April the 15th. And I will be right there waiting for my turn on April 15th. For those of you who've been fortunate enough to get the vaccine, please encourage your friends and neighbors, family members to get vaccinated. For those of you who will become eligible on April 15th, start planning now what you, what your plan is to be vaccinated. Contact your healthcare provider of debt, find a county or city site and figure out the websites, figure out how you'll do to make a plan. The quicker you get vaccinated, the quicker we can reopen our schools, reopen our economy, reopen our homeless shelters. As you may know, we're having social distancing in our homeless shelters. It's impacting our capacity to be able to care for more people in our community. So we're all connected, and that's just my plea to you as your mayor. Please get vaccinated when it's your turn. Another big concern in the community has been the inability to pay rent due to the closure of the economy and extreme job losses over the last year. We were able to successfully petition our federal and state partners to build an $84 million rental relief fund for our city. I encourage anyone who is concerned about past rent that they owe and in utility bills, so your water bill, your SDG need bill. If you're behind on those things because of the pandemic, I'd encourage you to check out the city's relief fund. You can find it at our Housing Commission's website, which is SDHC.org. Again, it's SDHC.org, San Diego Housing Commission. Michaela is so darn good. She put the link in the chat. I would ask you to please publicize this near and far. There is no shame in getting assistance. These dollars must get used, and they're available to any San Diegan who has had a loss of income, in fact, impacting their ability to pay rent or utilities because of COVID-19. If you go to that website, you'll see all the eligibility information. You can clear yourself for eligibility and you can apply online. If you're a landlord who has tenants who have not been paying the rent, I would encourage you to share this information with them. Your partnership with them can actually help them qualify for these dollars and bring them down. This is a great way to extinguish these debts as we try and reopen our economy. I would just jump to a couple of quick issues, and again, Barry, I'll throw it back to you if it's appropriate. We are eternally grateful for our president and for our members of Congress, including Scott Peters', support of the American Rescue Plan that has provided the city with over $300 million. What that means is that we'll be able to balance our city's budget without layoffs and without some draconian cuts to neighborhood services. I was mentioning only a moment ago how wonderful our police officers and our firefighters are. You can imagine after this year where they have been stretched to the max of awarding them with a pink slip or with a pay cut would not feel right. Thanks to the American Rescue Plan, we will not have to do that. Currently preparing the city's budget. We'll propose it on April the 15th. But I can tell you that it's a radically different budget because of this federal assistance. And again, when you see Congressman Peters, please express your appreciation. This would, this is a far different budget because of that assistance. I'll transition to two more quick issues and then just a general plea for, on the area for input. Many of you may know that we have answered the call of our federal government to host some of our unaccompanied minors who are stranded on our US Mexican border. As of about an hour ago, I was briefed that we have 1,351 of those, all girls, almost all girls at our San Diego Convention Center. I want to assure you of two things. Number one is that the convention center was to be vacant during this time. Many of you know it's been serving as a homeless shelter for the last year. We moved the last of our homeless out of that facility about March 22nd. This has been planned for about four months. And they are now in other shelters around the city, including at the shelter that's at City Hall, which hosts over 500 people. Because the building would be vacant, it seemed only right to put it to use for this purpose. It's limited in term. It's until July 15th. We currently are nearly at capacity. We expect to be at capacity tomorrow. And then we'll do the process of identifying these children and reuniting them with their families or with their sponsors, either in the US or back in their home countries. This is an emergency effort. It's a humanitarian effort, and I can tell you that I've been overwhelmed by the outpouring of support from San Diegans who want to help. Yesterday, we actually had a large group of folks drop off Easter baskets to the girls at the convention center. Everyone trying to do their part. If you're interested in helping, our local partner in this effort is South Bay Community Services. They are a long-term, very large, local nonprofit that does a number of things in the community, and they have been tapped to service the children there, providing case management. If you're interested in contributing, volunteering, etc., go to South Bay Community Services website. They have a portal there where you can signal your interest to, again, donate money, items, time. All of that's beneficial. Again, these children, 1,450 at max, will be there through the middle of the summer. We look forward to welcoming conventions back to San Diego Convention Center sometime in August. Believe it or not, we have bookings in August. And so while the building's empty, it's a taxpayer-owned facility. Let's put it to use, and let's make sure that these children are given a better shot than what they're getting in federal incarceration. The last thing is homelessness. It's striking to me, and Barry, I know you and I have had conversations about this in the past, that in the middle of the pandemic, in the middle of an economic recession, the thing I'm asked about the most is around homelessness. And I think that's really telling about the size of the population of our community. I know that this is a concern in Miramasa. I know while in times past, people think of this as a downtown issue, but we know that there are substantial numbers of individuals who are unsheltered in Miramasa and in surrounding communities. And as a consequence, we have to do a lot more. I've tried to bring a different approach to our homelessness crisis than the previous administration. I'm trying to lean on national best practices, not getting distracted by shiny objects and just staying focused on doing the work. One of the things I'm proudest of in the short time I've been mayor is to start a citywide homeless outreach team. Many of you know that we have long relied on San Diego Police Department to do our homeless outreach in the city, including in communities like Miramasa. We've now partnered with a group called PATH, which stands for People Assisting the Homeless. They've long provided homeless services in downtown San Diego, but they now have a contract to provide homeless outreach services in every city council district, including Council District Six. That means that you have people in your district every day of the week providing homeless outreach. Now, mind you, there are more in districts two, three, and eight. However, we do have a presence in District Six, again acknowledging the citywide nature of this concern. Councilmember Kate has their contact information. Michaela has their contact information. And this is an attempt to try and lead with social workers, not with police officers. As we know, our police officers have to respond to violent crime and other issues that are truly emergency in nature. While I do find having people sleeping on our streets to be an emergency, the better intervention is using social workers. These are trained social workers who have access to housing services and other supportive services that help getting people off the streets. This is a very modest first step, but I hope it's indicative of the work that I can bring to this important issue that was a problem before the pandemic. And because of the economic instability of many people are experiencing, maybe worse after the pandemic. Stay tuned for additional reforms that we look to do in this upcoming budget. But again, I hope that we'll be able to make more progress on this very significant issue in the weeks and months ahead. That's the report I have for you this evening. Again, I'm happy to take questions if that appropriate. If not, I'm happy to hang out in the chat and answer questions if that's a better use of your time. But again, I appreciate the chance to be directly in communication with the good people of Miramasa, and I hope that you'll always call upon me in any way that I can be helpful to the neighborhood.
Thank you, Mayor. We're going to go ahead and just take a few questions here. I know I have one for you. Jeff has one, and then what we will do is I will ask people to raise their hands in Zoom. We'll call on you one at a time. We'll probably do about five people from Zoom. And then if you wouldn't mind, just kind of hanging out in the chat for a few minutes, people can direct questions to you. I'll, I'll start with mine. It piggybacks right on your last presentation about homelessness. Excited to hear that there'll be reps now in Miramasa because I've had the experience of getting a hold of the homeless outreach team with PD, and they were stretched very thin, and they were predominantly downtown. It was kind of tough to get them out. Understandably, you know, that's nothing against them. They're doing a huge job. So I'm glad to hear there'll be people in District Six. What I'm looking for is two things. What might be the availability of any kinds of programs or temporary facilities in the District Six area? Because our experience through the hot team is most of the homeless in this area are from this area, and they reject the opportunity to go downtown for services because they're more comfortable near home. And the second one kind of piggybacks on Mayor Mark College, who is coming up next. And in working with Miramar College and various groups, we find, and President and Tanya can correct me if this number is wrong, about 10% of the students at Miramar College have some form of homelessness or home insecurity. We would love to see something done to help these students, so.
I'm happy to hop in, and I actually, I saw a comment from one of Senator Atkins staffers, which I tell you, a lot of the solutions will come from the state level. Barry, to your first question about housing in the Miramasa area or the Council District Six area, you may know that in the last state budget, there was a substantial grant given to the city of San Diego to acquire hotels to repurpose them into permanent supportive housing. One of those hotels actually is in Council District Six. It's down on Kearney Villa Road. And to my knowledge, it's the first kind of housing of its type in that council district. We are seeing across the state that particular program, which is known as Project Home Key, has really been extremely successful in vastly increasing the amount of a permanent supportive housing in the state in a relatively short amount of time. I was meeting with the governor on Friday. He gave every indication that he expects the state to really greatly increase that amount of money for that particular program. And so I would expect that the city to, who received over $30 million in last year's state budget, to get hopefully that much, if not more, and then to go and look at smaller of those properties. Again, many of them are in, not just in downtown, and I think that's good. And I appreciate every community that's willing to be a part of the solution, not just because it's a citywide concern, but for the reason you mentioned, Barry, is that many of these folks actually are from the communities where they're currently unsheltered. And asking them to go to another community is often met with resistance. What we have to do is build the rapport that these outreach workers I mentioned before are able to build to get them to accept the housing that they need and then to move on. So the trick is to have the outreach worker who's trained, the units that be available, and hopefully be able to connect people. I believe that we'll be able to do a lot more of that, and a lot of it will be coming because of the state's leadership and kudos to Senator Atkins, who's the probably the loudest vocal advocate for this in the state capital. To the second part of your question, you know, with those students, you know, these units that we're talking about are not discriminatory by age or by occupation, meaning to say working or student. So, you know, any increase in the number of units that we have will accrue to their benefit. I will tell you, Barry, one of the things I'm working on right now is a partnership with the Community College District to try and create a certification program to allow some of their students to actually fill these jobs in the homeless services area. We know that this actually is a profession. It has got distinct skill sets and a training that is necessary to be successful. And this is actually something I think we can use some of these relief dollars to actually do. It's kind of tangential to what you're asking, but it is a recognition that our community colleges are extremely important assets in our community. And given that some of these students are experiencing homelessness for economic reasons, be able to secure their pathway into jobs as we grow the number of outreach workers, having trained professionals, trained by our community college, you can see the pathways that we're creating that actually will, I think, make us more effective in getting more people off the streets quicker. So that's some of the strategies we're employing. Again, that will be evident in the budget that I propose later this month.
Mayor, Jeff, I know you had something.
Yeah, hi, Todd. So, you know, I'm chairman of the planning group. We've talked before. We've had more issues than usual lately. All coming from the city, not, not here. We've been doing fine here. We've approved some big projects in Carroll Canyon that come with a lot of parkland and litigation. All of that is fine. But the city has been doing some things that are not so fine. One is the Parks Master Plan will, will do away with the, the FBI will do away with any new money coming into the community from, from development. It'll all go into a big pot downtown. And then on top of that, we're going through a community plan update. This has evolved over time, but what the city is proposing and what the Planning Commission apparently loves is a proposal that had 23,000 new units, approximately 50,000 new residents all along Miramasa Boulevard in the industrial area and in and in our shop, our shopping centers. So that's an enormous impact on the community, and I just, I'm very concerned that, you know, they're doing this without considering the effects that will have, and I hope we'll, you will make some effort to make sure this isn't done without considering the consequences.
Sure, Jeff. Well, maybe take those in reverse order. With regard to the community plan update, I mean, this is a process you well know, and thank you for your service, by the way, on the planning committee, is one that's community informed. Ultimately, yes, the council has to adopt whatever the final version is. But you may know that I updated basically all the community planning, community plans in my old city council district. And we took eight years to do it, not because anyone liked talking about it for eight years, but because we really involved the community. And I'm pleased with what ultimately got adopted. Yes, it did create some change in the community, but it was changed at a rate that the neighborhood could accept and was willing to support. I'm not looking to make any changes in terms of my overall approach. Often, these things come in at very high numbers. They get changed over time. And I will just say that, you know, every neighborhood has to be a part of solving our housing crisis. You know, our housing affordability crisis is driven by scarcity. We're building less than half the amount of units that we need in order to keep up with population growth. But that to say, if, if the numbers you're seeing are higher than you can tolerate, you know, this is a part of what we will talk about over the next number of months or years. On the first part, you know, I want to be clear that the FBI funds were eliminated a number of years ago. But I think two things that are important to be clear about. Number one is any funds that were collected for a particular neighborhood like Miramasa legally cannot be diverted to another community. So whatever you have accrued to date must stay in your neighborhood. I'm gonna go, it says, you're right. Decision for trying to do a citywide fee because what we're seeing are dollars are accumulating in pots in different neighborhoods. No projects that we can legally use the dollars on, and so they're just sitting there. Why I think this actually may accrue to the benefit of Miramasa is that, as you mentioned, Jeff, you all have been very forward-looking and actually adopting various projects or approving various projects that will bring more people and businesses and jobs to your district. From my standpoint, the neighborhoods that are accepting this growth need to have the infrastructure dollars to accommodate that growth. And to the extent that some of those dollars currently today are locked up in neighborhoods that maybe aren't accepting of growth or don't have projects, we may not be able to move forward with various projects because we don't have enough money in your neighborhood to accomplish what we need to accomplish. I think this actually can be additive. As you know, the Parks Master Plan has not been adopted yet. It was rejected by the city council. We're currently working with the community and with the council to try and figure out how we can gain support for this. But again, ultimately, because Miramasa, I think, has been a positive actor in saying, we know we, growth will come. We want to engage it. We want to curate it, and we want to put it in our community where we will accept it. I think you should have access to more dollars to make sure that that's actually improving your quality of life, not diminishing it. And that ability to take dollars from any neighborhood and put it in neighborhoods where growth is happening, again, I think will benefit Miramasa, but be very clear. Dedicate to Miramasa cannot be spent somewhere else.
Yeah, I'm watching this. Yes.
Okay, we can discuss further later.
All right. Next, I have Professor Tanya Hertz from Miramar College.
Thank you, Barry. Thank you. My question is, it's about how we at the community college can, can, can help and can support. So we actually have just formed a regional entrepreneurship advisory committee to identify any gaps that, that are, that we can see in industry, and the regional committee includes city, Miramar, Mesa, and continuing education. We'd love it if anybody has input or would like to be involved with that committee, please do reach out to me. I put my contact information there in the chat. We'd love your input. We'd love your help, and we want to help, right? We want to help. So just let us know what we can do. And, and we're there, we're there to, to serve. So more of a comment than a question, but.
Michaela from my team, maybe let's make sure that we connect Tanya with our economic development staff and make sure they're aware of these efforts. Thank you.
Next, Vivek Shabra.
Hi, Todd. How are you? Good to see you.
Oh, my friend, how are you?
It's good. I've been in touch with your office anyway, so we'll, we'll chat about it. But I have a question for you. You, you're very passionate about the homeless and uplifting the homeless people. Do you see a pathway which can take the homeless people combined with the community college training, which like program like what Tanya is doing for, and we are involved with Tanya quite a bit in that program? And then stitch that with some form of small business loans as we have office, right? So that we can bring them out of the homelessness.
Some. I mean, like, I have to be honest, you know, many of these individuals are suffering from conditions that may not make them the most likely entrepreneurs. That's not true for everyone, but a good, the number of them are. But yeah, I mean, I, you know, I have an opportunity basically every week to go to a shelter somewhere in the city. And there are people who are there due to bad luck. And so this idea of creating pathways, career pathways, community colleges being the bargain that they are, high quality but low cost. It's amazing. It's a wonderful asset that we need to make the best use of. And particularly when I think about in downtown, you can imagine the proximity to City College is just phenomenal. We have to get a little more transit up to Miramar College, but we're getting there slowly but surely. But point is, I mean, to your, to your question, yes. Is that likely for most of these folks? No, I don't think that's likely. But I think that what I know about homelessness, and this is the, why it's the most complex problem, and people often crave a simple solution, is there's no one pathway. If anyone found their way into homelessness, all of them are unique and varied. And that means that our solutions for them have to be equally as unique and varied. And so that if you have someone who simply had bad luck, maybe a job loss, you're that, getting them the pathway out of it because they're not dealing with substance abuse issues. They're not dealing with the health issues. They simply had, they need skills training and entrepreneurial training and some investment. That's possible, and we should have that as being a part of our continuum or spectrum of services. Right now, a lot of our services are heavy in law enforcement and incarceration. That's extremely expensive and not always effective, rarely and not often effective. Creating more different options is a way to do that. Again, controlling for the fact that some of the folks could be, as you mentioned, capable of higher education, more skills building, and self-employment.
And maybe even if they're not working in the self-employment themselves, a lot of these startups that are being founded, they're looking for labor and they could give them, them jobs. I mean, there's things that are creative, you know?
Absolutely. Yeah, that's another, you know, San Diegans are amazing people. I was mentioning the migrant shelter and, and whatnot, people offering. One of those common things I deal with when talking with business people who are frustrated by the level of homelessness, often their answer is, I'm, I'm willing to employ people, and that's fabulous. Again, there is a chunk of folks who are economically displaced. Other folks have much more significant co-occurring situations that require a different intervention. But again, we have amazing people here who are willing to be a part of the solution. Our goal as a city is to be accepting of all that help and try and get the people paired up with the right solution.
Thank you. Thank you, Todd.
It's great to see you.
And I have President Lundberg, Miramar College.
Oh, sure. Thank you. Hello, Mayor Gloria. Haven't been able to cross paths with you yet, but I look forward to post-COVID. I was really just offering a comment directed to you specifically that Miramar College is here. You know, a lot of folks think that community colleges are focused on students, and we are. However, we're also, we really see ourselves as a bridge between economic development, the labor force, and helping to, to provide folks for that as well as students. So, you know, we never lose sight of the fact that community in, community colleges are middle name. So that's part, that'll be part of my presentation too. But just, just wanted to take this opportunity, Mayor, to say we're here, even though you may feel closer to city. We're here and we're ready to work with you, so.
First off, congratulations on your position, and I may be physically closer to city just because I live in Mission Hills and work downtown. But, you know, I embrace my role as citywide and everything from down in San Ysidro up to the San Francisco Valley and everything in between. It's a big city, and that makes, that's a good thing. And yes, you know, your board trustee members, who I interface with a lot, all remind me just the incredible things that are on there. And again, that's a part of why when we're looking at the city budget and some of these relief funds, how we can work together. Some of the trustees actually serve on my back-to-work SD Task Force. Again, recognizing that as we consider how we put people back to work, that our community college districts can be a real powerful way to do that. But I look forward to post-COVID being able to hang out. Again, April 15th, I'm getting vaccinated. So maybe about two weeks after that, we'll be good to go with, with no risk involved, or less risk.
Excellent. Well, does anyone have a question or the mayor wants to hop into chat and answer some of your questions now? So this may be the perfect time. And I'm just going to ask if a couple of y'all could mute. We do have some background noise, and I unfortunately do not have the mute control.
And Barry, that's a great place to end. Yes, I'm hanging out in the chat and just answering some questions. Michaela's there too. Just a quick plug, I've been doing a Meet Your Mayor series. The one for Council District Six is on April 24th at 10:00 AM. It's on Zoom and very easily to access. It's an effort, hopefully unlike what you've seen before. How many times did you have councilmembers say, I don't know, you need to ask the mayor? How many times have you had the mayor say, I'll ask the council member? Well, Councilmember Kate and I will do this together. We've been pairing these up in each of the council districts. Really an opportunity to do anything you needed at the city online on that day. So again, mark your calendars, April 24th, 10:00 AM. We'll have a lot more time together, a lot more Q and A with myself and Councilmember Kate. So I invite you to that. And again, thank you for your time this evening. I'm happy to toss it back to you and look forward to hearing from, from Wes and from Tanya.
Well, Gloria, thank you so much for coming out tonight. Look forward to seeing more of you.
Likewise.
All right. So the mayor will be in chat for a while. We're going to go ahead and move on. We have a double header from Miramar College. First, we'll ask the new president, P. Wesley Lundberg, to introduce himself, tell us a little bit about himself. And more importantly, all of the plans and goals that he has for the college over the next few years. President Lundberg.
Yes, thank you. And it's not lost on us, Barry, that you are an alum of Miramar College, so we're very proud of that. And, and others here, I'm sure that I don't know, but we're happy to connect with you. So thank you very much. We, Tony and I are very happy to be here with you tonight. I was asked to go a little bit over who I am and, and then to launch right into the vision of Miramar and what we're doing. There's a lot going on at Miramar College. Next slide, please. So I began on July 1, 2020, which is just a few months ago. I came here from Long Island, New York, but as you'll notice on the first bullet there, I grew up in Poway and Pinusquita, so I am a local kid. I went to Mount Carmel High, Black Mountain Middle School, and Pinusquita School. Black Mountain, I was one of the first ones, first sixth graders to go through Black Mountain. So the first class to go all the way through. Very proud of it. I'm so happy to be back home. It's been a long meandering journey, and I'm very, very happy to be back here. So I am also a community college graduate. That is where I woke up academically. A few minutes, but it's important for folks to know that I think, it's important for folks to know that I've never sought a job at a university. It's always been community college, and I'm deeply, deeply passionate about our mission, and I'll explain that a little bit more in a few minutes. But I began my career in higher education at Cook Inlet Tribal Council in Anchorage, Alaska. But I began my career in higher education at Cook Inlet Tribal Council in Anchorage, Alaska. It was a coast guard that took me up there and and I finished my bachelor's degree and did my master's up there and went right to work for a an Alaska Native organization, which was very formative for me and certainly an understanding students. I became a English professor, took a job in Minnesota, tenure track position in Minnesota in 1992. And then from that position slid into administration reluctantly. Long story on how that happened, but the president had been recognizing in me some administrative talents and and it took me a while to get warmed up to doing it. I believe that my place was in the classroom and many times I I miss it very much. But just so you know, I started out as a professor in the classroom. Just to summarize the rest of my career in lightning form, I've served as a faculty association president. So lead of a union, a local union, a union grievance representative, academic dean, accreditation liaison officer, chief academic officer and in a regional accreditation evaluator. So I've been around the block a little bit, a lot of salt on my skin, as I say. I mentioned a moment ago that I was in the coast guard. That's what took me up to Alaska. So I thought I'd just throw that image on there of a very young me. And a picture of the ship that I served on in the Caribbean in the in the eighties. And and other experience, I have been a flight operation supervisor with United Parcel Service. And I have been a small business owner. Not many in academia can can boast that. But I'm very proud to say that I was a charter charter boat captain, had a fishing charter company in Valdez, Alaska. And and so I understand the ins and outs and the difficulties and struggles of of starting a small business and then keeping it going. I mentioned a moment ago, formative moments for me. I was told in the ninth grade by a career counselor, not to be named, that I was not college material. And I joke around sometimes that I'd love to look that person up now and say, look where I am. You cannot tell people what they are not because anybody can rise far and high and and certainly far more than a college president. And there are lots of examples out there of that. But I'm constantly telling students this story as a badge of honor that that I was among those who were told that you you're not going to be anything more than this. After that, that was formative for me. I got out of high school and and I went to work as a janitor. I guess about a year and they were moving me up through the supervisory ranks. And I wasn't cleaning offices very soon and just checking on accounts. And I remember standing in one office at 2 a.m. looking around, just checking to make sure that that employees were doing what they're supposed to be doing. And I said to myself, I don't want to do this for the rest of my life. So I enrolled at the community college and and the rest is, well, you know, the rest because I just shared it with you. But stood there and and said, this is not what I want to be. And many of our students feel the same way and many of folks that you know as well. So so turning our attention to Miramar, we are in transition. When I was in the hiring process, it was made very clear to me that that Miramar was in a place of needing to build unity internally. And it needed to focus efforts around a theme such as equity and equity was was something that was very lacking at Miramar. So we focused our our efforts, beginning with the fall kickoff for the academic year. When I was just a few weeks on the job, I presented a story of sharing the space literally from moving from New York, driving in an Ford Explorer with a six-year-old and turning around several times and saying, Nikki, share the space. Because he would get loud and energetic as kids do. And that became a theme for for equity for us at Miramar that it really does come down to. That's really what it comes down to. So so we have adopted that as a formal. In terms of administration, we have begun reorganizing, have done quite a bit here. President's cabinet, I I was formerly just the president and the vice presidents. And I made the decision to expand that out to managers and directors, excuse me, deans. So that we would have more direct conversation and communication between us and to draw them into the the decision making for the for the college. So my approach is very inclusive. I don't like to be in the boat alone. I very much believe that the collective wisdom really is the best outcome for the greater good. And and so more people at the table has already been generating better decisions. We are, I'm going to be announcing this week, the establishment of an equity office. We have not had that at Miramar previously. But we are going to have an equity office that does indirectly direct report to myself. It will be reporting up through institutional research just to ensure that we have well administrative oversight, but also a direct connection with data. It's very important that we be in touch with the the trends and the data, what's going on with our students. So we'll be doing that. We had four strategic goals and we I asked the college to infuse, excuse me, infuse equity, inclusion and diversity into our strategic planning. And so there was an attempt to infuse those into the four goals. And and we stepped back at them at one moment and said, you know what? Let's pull these out and make them a separate strategic goal so that they get special emphasis and focus. And they stand out there as equal with everything else, not just embedded. That said, the efforts on equity are embedded in everything we do. We're focusing on program review. Program review, for those who are not familiar with it, is a what a process that we take programs, academic programs, student resource programs, and make sure that we're doing what we were hoping to do. Oftentimes in higher education, there's some focus on that, but not enough, in my opinion. We are, we are working on revising our program review process so that it drives decisions about resource allocation. While also positioning us better for, well, showing accountability for accreditation, but also for the community to see that we're accomplishing what we say we're going to. We're examining hiring practices. Just as a quick example, we we have a vice president for instruction. Search underway right now. And we realized with the screening, we had first posted this in the fall, we realized in the screening that we had some some unintended bias and systemic prejudice, if you will, embedded in the process. Traditionally, for a vice president of instruction, you look for someone who comes from the tenured professor. Well, if we do that, then given the fact that most of the professorship in in higher education is white. That really, well, it's systemic prejudice. It's it's preventing folks of color from applying for the position. So we changed the criteria to demonstrated ability to work with tenured faculty, full-time faculty. And that really gets at what the intention of that is while making sure that we're not inadvertently blocking anybody from applying for a position. So just one example of what we're doing with hiring practices. Next slide, please. We're taking new approaches to data diving. If you don't know that term, you know, it means diving into the data literally and looking at what what it tells you. So one thing that we're working very hard on and we're looking at educating ourselves on how to better disaggregate the data. So if you, for example, if you were to take data and look at how your white students are doing compared to students of color, then you could be watering down the data from that's on the student of color. If you were to, for example, at Miramar, what we found is that if you disaggregate that data, you'll find that Asian students are doing very well in outcomes, but Latinx population is struggling a little bit more. And African Americans are are really struggling. And my belief is that there's cultural reasons for that. There's preparation and and home issues that that come into play as they do with community college students. So but the point is this, that if you if you clump everybody of color together and keep that data aggregated, then you you won't notice those kinds of trends and you won't notice that there's somebody in the room that needs some special attention. And by that, I mean, just taking a moment to say, look, what's going on with you and what can we do to work with you to help you reach your goals and be successful? So that's what we mean by data driving. Circle of change is something that was started by the interim president before me. That is just a place for folks to get together and talk about race issues, ethnicity issues, anything else that makes feel makes folks feel other or marginalized. Are what we talk about there. Those are on Fridays. It is the president's circle of change. So I have continued that and we continue to have between 30 and 45 people, staff and faculty attending that every single Friday. So it's 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 quite a powerful time that we share together. Looking for systemic prejudice, just in the interest of time, I'll just skip over that because I think I gave you an example of that earlier. But we recognize that there are prejudices that are built into the systems that we have. Not any fault of anyone in particular, not that anybody is intentionally being racist, but that there's racist practices that are built in. So we're looking to root those out. Creating new spaces for dialogue. I just shared an example of that too, so we can move quickly over that one. The circle of change is is an example of such a place, but we're looking for that for students as well. And one population that we've identified, two populations we've identified that we're not working as well with that we could is the LGBTQ plus population and veterans. And as you can imagine, veterans are very near and dear to my heart as a vet myself. So we're making efforts to make sure that we're reaching out to and providing for those students. Faculty-led training to address equity issues in the classroom. We have some some very strong efforts going on. Thirty-some faculty just in the in the past several months have have looked at their the data on their students in their own classrooms and the practices that they have and have identified ways to to improve. Making the classroom more inclusive. Participatory governance is something in higher education that truly is a democratic place, higher education is. And the president may be the the head of the college, but just as in the national or what the national government is supposed to be. You have the Congress working together. We have the academic senate and we have the classified professional senate and we have the student senate. So they are part of participatory governance that informs me and and the college leadership on on what to do and how to move forward. I've mentioned focus on program review. There's three reasons for that. I mentioned accountability earlier. That is what it's traditionally for. And as such, it is often at most colleges become something of hoop jumping and checking off of boxes. And as I shared earlier, for us, we want to make it meaningful. To do that, we have to build it into everything centrally that we do. And so that's that's what we're working on now. It will help us identify strengths and weaknesses for bragging rights as well as identifying ways for to help us help us continually improve. Program review is the basis for resource allocation, in my opinion. We need to justify how we're using tax dollars and making sure that we are accounting for that for for the public. Next slide. Student support is another area that we're working on. What areas are we overlooking? What populations of students are we overlooking? Providing for student life, very different things, student support, talks about resources for academics as well as challenges such as food insecurity and home insecurity and helping students address that. An increasing trend over the last 10 to 15 years is mental mental counseling needs. We have an increase in in students struggling with various challenges and and we're addressing that. We're exploring a new student center. We're, we need to identify a space. We're pretty crammed at Miramar. But when we reopen, we'll be looking at creating a kind of hub where all of the student life and student support things are working off of each other, branching out so that they're easily identified by students where to go for what they need as well as to connect with others. New programming and program building. I'll just jump down for a moment to the the bachelor's degrees. If you've been following what's going on in the legislature, there's an increase, well, there's a bill ready to go to the floor, expanding the the pilot bachelor's programs at community colleges. Mesa is the one from our district that is offering a bachelor's program. We are exploring what Miramar might do for for bachelor's degree programs. These are not to be in competition with universities, but it's recognizing that for many areas, the high school diploma is not enough. An associate's degree may not get them the the specialization that they need. And a bachelor's degree would be required and we're positioned well to respond to those needs. At Miramar College, we have a need for fine arts. We've been, we're a very well-balanced college when you talk about vocational, technical career programs and transfer programs. Those are your two traditional areas, the tech and then the transfer. We're about 50/50, honestly, and it's the only community college I've been at where where we have that good of a balance and I love that. But one area that we we are really lacking is in the humanities areas, in particular, the fine arts. So we'll be looking at that. You know, I can't remember who it was off the top of my head that I think it was Winston Churchill that said that, you know, business may be what drives the economy, but it's it's culture that we live for. So it's art that we live for. And and so we need to, we need to incorporate that into our balances as well. And then being more responsive and more attentive to economic and community needs. You heard me a moment ago making a plug to the mayor. We're here, ready to respond to what the city identifies. But what my message to 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 you all would be as business leaders and community leaders, help us identify areas that we can help build Miramasa and the the economic development and growth there. Next slide, please. So what does all that mean? Mission statement. My doctoral dissertation is on mission fulfillment and mission alignment. So it's natural that I would come in speaking a lot about mission mission fulfillment. But you know, when you look at a mission statement, you look at this long paragraph and you can read through it. We could read through it. San Diego Miramar College's mission is to prepare students to succeed by providing quality instruction and services in an environment that supports and promotes success, diversity, inclusion and equity with innovative programs and partnerships to facilitate student completion for degrees, certificates, transfer, workforce training and or career advancement. One sentence. So, you know, I'm poking fun at us a little bit, but it really is actually a good mission statement. But what it does is there's a lot of words there and you lose sight of what the core elements are. So next slide, please. If you extract the six or excuse me, five that are in that paragraph long, they come down to these these student success, quality instruction and services, environment of providing an environment of diversity, inclusion and equity, providing innovative programs and partnerships, and then student completion for degrees, certificates and career advancement. That's really what it boils down to and that captures what we're here for. So when I talk about mission alignment, that's really the strategy for doing that. You take that mission statement, you extract those pieces, you make sure that your strategic goals are aligned with those and that should drive everything we do. If there's ever an activity at the college that doesn't align with that, then we need to stop and say, why are we doing it? Maybe it should be there. Maybe it's missing from the mission. But we need to be clear and we need to be transparent with ourselves, with our students and with the community. So everything an institution does should clearly align with its mission. And systems theory and institutions' vision, goals and action should be derived from the mission statement. And there should be mechanisms in place to ensure that the mission is fulfilled. As I know all of you are listening, earlier I mentioned at two different points, program review. That is one of those mechanisms. It will be looking at the strategic goals which are derived from the mission and then making sure that that we have those things all aligned and that we're fulfilling our mission. My view is we're stewards of the taxpayers' dollars. We are here to serve the community. We're here to serve the state and the people and the business community partners that we have. So that's our focus. That's what we're here for. And with that, I'll be happy to take questions now or later, according to how 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 the plan goes or pass it on to Tanya Hertz with our rec center, which is many of you know, but a fantastic operation that we have going. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm just going to say, you mentioned wanting to become more involved with the community. After April 15th, I would love to sit down with you and talk about all the ways that our community organizations can work with Miramar College.
Absolutely. Please. Yes.
Yes. All right. We'll do the same thing. If anyone would like to ask a question, go ahead and put your name in the chat and I will call on you. Okay. No questions? I think that was a very thorough presentation.
I think, okay.
More a comment than a question. I was just thinking that after Tanya has had a chance to speak about the Rec Innovation Lab, we might take questions for either or both Wes or Tanya. I'll just jump in specifically for Wes here. To me, as a longtime Miramason, involved with promoting the arts in the community. involved with promoting the arts in the community. I'm thrilled to hear you express that as a need to be fulfilled on campus at Miramar. My husband and I way back when were the clarinet section in the Mandolin Orchestra that was a class that met at Miramar College back in the early eighties and it's, you know, there's a lot of potential for what can be done there.
Absolutely. Pam, maybe what we need to do is form an advisory group and perhaps you and your husband would like to be a part of that. Just so you know, the San Diego Miramar Foundation is, is therefore scholarships, and that's what they've been focused on. We're working on expanding it for philanthropy, for programming. And it was the, the, the need in the fine arts that drove that. Recognizing as I came in, wait a minute, what if somebody wants to donate a piano? We don't have a mechanism for that right now. So we're working on that. And within the next year, we should be able to, to work on this. So maybe you'll come alongside me and we can go find some rich people to give us pianos and help us, help us build the program, build a band perhaps.
Sounds good. We can make connections. The high school is a great resource there too. So look forward to working with you on that.
Great. Thank you, Pam.
Excellent. So I think we will do that. I'm going to go ahead and introduce Professor Tanya Hertz. And then at the end, we will take questions for everyone. Now Professor Hertz is well-known to me. I had the honor of doing two semesters at the Rec Innovation Lab. REC is Regional Entrepreneurship Center. And this is an incredible program that teaches people how to build their business, how to become successful. And I'm going to go ahead and turn it out to Professor Hertz so that you can hear all about this wonderful resource that we have right here at Miramar College.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Barry. It was, you were one of the very, very first cohorts to go through the program and and helped us kind of work through some of those, some of those bugs as we, as we first got going in. And now we're, we're really up to steam, but we're still virtual. And I did want to mention one thing about the comment about the fine art. Entrepreneurship is the, it's, it's, it's the, the corner where business meets art, I've always felt. And so I think there's things that we can do also in the, in the Rec Innovation Lab with, with fine art. And I'm going to be showing you here in a little bit, some, some things that we've already been doing. And I know Barry, if you remember back when we were doing the logo design with the art department there. So we, we, we work with a lot of different departments in entrepreneurship. So my name again is Tanya Hertz. I'm the director of the Rec Innovation Lab. I'm also educator of entrepreneurship and I've been teaching entrepreneurship for a little over a decade at SDSU and just going on two years now at, at Miramar. And we came to Miramar to build an incubator. An incubator is the Rec Innovation Lab. It's a local business incubator. And just like an incubator for, for small animals like chickens, we put small businesses, baby businesses in a controlled environment where we can give the, the business the resources that they needed, that critical early stages of life for a business when without resources, they, they generally would fail. They would, they would die. And so we, we have a unique focus though, in that being at a community college, we are helping founders with, that are primarily diverse and, and, and the goal is to, to have a more equitable incubator than you would see in, at, at most other either universities or in industry. So one other difference, we are, we help focus, we help the students to focus on high-growth startups where at a lot of community colleges, you'll see the small business support focus. And so it's a little different. It's different. It's not something that you've maybe seen before. Next slide, please. So I'm going to show just a, a little quick video. It's just a minute or two. And I think I'll let the, the students sort of tell their own story rather than, than me talking. So Viani, if you want to get that up and running.
Hi, my name is Tanya Hertz and I am the founder and director of the Rec Innovation Lab at San Diego Miramar College. We're, we're making a difference in people's lives and I would love it if you could support a student.
One of the biggest takeaways, not just for me, but for everybody here at REC is the connections part. So we're making a lot of connections here with industry experts, professionals and entrepreneurs.
It offers an environment where you can actually come and meet people who bring opportunities to whatever you're working on.
For me, it's been amazing, just the different type of opportunities. I'm really grateful for all the people I've met.
By providing it in a shared setting, like the entrepreneurship center, people can come and get access to these kinds of tools, learn through the workshops provided. And then what's really cool about the entrepreneurship center is now we have the resources to help them form a team and turn that into a company that can do great things.
Everybody is included and is not left behind, whether it's entrepreneurship, whether it's education, whether it's starting a business, running a business, supporting their community or supporting the world in general.
I've been exposed to so many new opportunities. It's changed my life, like just working with the interns, working with mentors, a new insight to start your own business like I've never had before.
I was allowed the resources and the mentorship to grow and to develop this business mindset. It's something that I can now do at Miramar. And Miramar here is allowing me to become a resource for other creatives in the community.
Without the resources of the Rec Innovation Lab, I would not have been able to grow the business that I have grown today. The resources that are available have enabled somebody like me without a business background to be able to have a business mindset.
Being a father of three kids and a veteran, it's created something for me to be a part of. And I'm just like overwhelmed with gratitude for it.
The Rec Innovation Lab gave me guidance on what I wanted to do for the rest of my career.
I have to say, this program is unlike any program that I've ever been involved with.
So we started the REC to help people who don't have big bank accounts, who don't have a family to help them to start, who don't have a house that they can pull equity from.
Is unlike anything, any other program that I have seen here in San Diego or within the whole state.
It only takes $250 to pay for an entire year at the REC. But if that's too much, $20 would help, $5 would help. So anything that you can do, we would love your help.
We need all the support that we can get from you all and it would mean the world to us.
So come alongside us in our journey as we grow businesses together. Your support will help people like me change the world.
That was a video that we made when we were doing some fundraising, some scholarships at the REC there. And the, the startups that are coming out of there are amazing. And you could see that the different kinds of, yeah, the different people at the REC, the different age demographics. On the next slide, you'll see, I thought I'd share this with you. It, it was a question from our, from our data last semester and I asked, what is your age? What is your age? And, and you can see on the slide here, it's pretty evenly distributed, all the way from, from zoomers to boomers, we say. Right from, from 15-year-old high school students who are taking one college class to the 73-year-old retired Qualcomm executive who is, who's, who's come to the REC to, to learn how to actually launch that idea that they've been mulling over for years, but never really knew what to do with it. We have a very, very diverse student body and the ethnicity of our students really matches the diversity of the community colleges. It's one of the main reasons why I came to community college to start the, the incubator so that we could get these kind of resources to people who typically wouldn't have resources like this or wouldn't have access to this. Most incubators are not going out there and, and looking for this particular demographic. We, we have more than, it's 58% female, the REC. About 70, 78% of our founders are either ethnic or racial minorities. And so it's a really diverse bunch. Next slide, please. And the kind of companies that they're starting are different. They're different than you would normally see at a community college, but they're very similar to what you would see at a traditional incubator. We have a lot of people who are starting these ed tech kind of companies. And ed tech is education technology. So learning how to, or teaching people how to use tools like virtual and augmented reality, teaching coding. We have SaaS companies. We have startups who are, who are doing services and a lot of, a lot of them will come to us with an idea for a small business. And we really help them to think a little differently about how they could take this small business idea and turn it into something that has potential to scale, potential to, to grow. A lot of my former students now have multi-multi-million dollar companies and are growing and raising seed funds. And it's, it's exciting. It's exciting. We do also, those serve traditional small businesses and technical education in fields like auto, diesel, childcare, yoga. Those are the kind of things that people are studying at Miramar College. And so those are the kind of companies that we help them start. These are, here are the logos of, of a lot of the companies at the, at the REC that are going through the program right now. And when I said we have, we, we work with people from all departments. This is the, the graphic arts department at both San Diego State and at Miramar. And we're able to do so much for the students because we, we work with different departments and do things like design logos. Next slide, please. And we provide a lot of resources to our student founders. So we have calculated it at $66,300 on average, the average startup going through the REC gets in resources per semester. That's, that's a lot of, a lot of money. And some of that is in the form of, of, of loans and grants and seed funds. Some of that is in meeting with, with various attorneys. They on average meet about four times a semester with attorneys and that's $600 an hour that it saves them. We have, we have a pilot program where we're actually paying for the, paying for their, their staff, right? Giving, giving jobs at $13.50 an hour through our training gain program. And, and we're, we're having these companies that are being founded out of the REC, we're, we're giving them resources that you normally wouldn't see at, at, at an incubator. And we do things like film videos, professional videos for them. And next slide, please. You'll see that the reason that we're actually able to do this, and people ask me all the time, how can you do this? How can you, how can you provide so many resources to these students? When most incubators, they'll either take equity, so they'll take part ownership of the businesses, which we would never do. Or they charge anywhere $3,000 to $5,000 a month to be in a normal incubator. And we don't. We charge $46 as part of our, that's the, the per-unit cost at community college. And we can do this because it's subsidized through community college and we bootstrap, right? We practice what we teach. We, we, we leverage the resources of other, of our partners and, and we make it happen that way. Next slide, please. So some of the partners that we work with, this is just a, a few of the partners that we actually work with at the community college. And some of them like New Media Rights, that's the, it's through Cal Western School of Law. The law students, they need, they need time. They need practice working with, with, you know, various businesses and writing contracts. And we need contracts written. We need to meet with them. And so we're able to offer things like that for free. We have SCORE now that we work with, which is a wonderful organization. It's been around for a long time. They have great mentorship. But they needed some, a platform. They needed a place that they could do this virtually. And we had that. So we, we really teach the startups how to leverage what we have and what, what the partners can use. Next slide, please. And, oh, and by the way, there are some videos, so you can skip over the video here, but I'll, I'll share this link with all of you. So that you can, you can access it on your own later. But we do things like, here's some of the attorneys that we meet with. We, we, we teach the, the student founders how to leverage media, how to, how to do their own PR campaigns so that they don't have to pay for often, you know, things that, that people would often pay for. Next slide. And then we also work with high schools quite a bit. So we work with several different organizations that are at the high school level. 21IQ Labs, Vivek, he's here with us today. That's an organization that they provide tech training and they teach high school students how to, how to pitch. And then we provide the curriculum training. We also work with School of Entrepreneurship Technology with San Diego Unified. And then we work with SDSU. So because at SDSU, they're always looking for these trained, you know, pipeline of trained students who have that education and who, who know what they're doing. And they know that if they go through our program, that when they get to, to SDSU, they're ready to go at the incubator there. So they don't even have to go through that really, that really lengthy, complicated process. They have guaranteed placement in the incubator at SDSU, which is, which is great. This semester, the summer rather, we're working, we're going to do another program or another. We did the pilot last summer with, with Vivek. And we'll, we'll have two more cohorts through the high schools and it's just growing exponentially. We have so many people who are interested in being a part of this program, which is really, really exciting. It's really exciting. So if you know of anybody who wants to, who's in the high school level and they want help starting a business, send them my way. We have a, we have an info session on April 22nd for the high schoolers. That's at 6 o'clock. And then at 7:30, I believe, we're going to have another info session just for anybody who needs that small business help. Next slide, please. And some of the, there's more here about some of the organizations that we work with, including we work with Startup Quest and Startup Quest. We're going to be giving a presentation at the California Entrepreneurship Educators Conference. And we're going to bring our students there to present at SDSU. And last year there were 100, no, I'm sorry, 1,000. There was 1,958, something like this, attendees. We're going to bring them there to show some of the innovative things that we're doing, like what we've done with Startup Quest, which it was an amazing alternate reality gamification that we did. It was basically like a breakout room for entrepreneurship students. So great. I did want to just mention quickly, we, we did start the Regional Entrepreneurship Advisory Committee. This is the first ever regional advisory committee. So it's not just a school committee. It's the entire region. And the very first meeting on that is also on April 22nd. And if you are interested in helping us to fulfill those gaps and to, and to address the needs of, of the community, please, we'd love your input. We, we just, we want to make sure that we're responsive. So just wanted to say, a lot of people come to me and say, Tanya, I don't have an idea for a business yet. I want to learn though, how to be an entrepreneur. Can I still join the REC? Is there anything that I can do? I know it's an impacted program. The answer is yes. Yes, 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 you can. Next slide, please. And the way that you can do that is you can come take a class at Miramar. I, like I said, I will be sharing these slides with you. You can sign up for any of the entrepreneurship classes we teach. And in fact, I wouldn't recommend going through an incubator until you had some entrepreneurship education and, and took at least one of the classes that we teach. We're teaching every semester of classes. And I know, you know, we've only been, we've only been around for, for a little, little over a year now. And when we first started, we didn't even know if we were going to be able to fill up a class. And now there's 200 people on the waiting list for the REC. And, and so it's, it's exciting to see how fast we've grown. We also, if you know of anybody who, who does want just a little bit of extra money and they, they also want to learn how to work in a startup or what it's like in a real startup, we are hiring through the training gain pilot program, hiring people to work with the startups. And there's information on that here and contact information on that. And next slide, please. And we also offer a lot of workshops. I, I don't know if you've seen some of the workshops that we have, but every week we have another workshop. On average, we do about three workshops a week. Last year, I know, yeah, that was last year. All last year, we did almost 25,000 views of the workshops in that first year that we were an incubator. And so that's, that's a pretty decent-sized audience and they're really amazing workshops and anyone can come. All of you, if you're interested, please do just come to one of our workshops. Next Wednesday, we have this workshop. It's the, the CEO of Proven Recruiting. And we always try to, we try to bring in diverse founders to, to really give the students a paradigm of what they can be. So we have the CEO of this recruiting. He's, he's going to talk about what it was like to be an Asian CEO. And he started one of the most successful startups in San Diego, earning over $40 million a year in his startup. And he had to overcome stereotypes about entrepreneurship in his family. A lot of immigrant families, they, they don't necessarily value entrepreneurship without, without some education. And then he also, there was a lot of stereotypes about Asians in the world of entrepreneurship, but he overcame it and he's just an amazing, amazing speaker. And so if you'd like to come, we always, on event break, we, we always open this up to, to the public. Anybody who wants to learn more can come. Next slide. And if you want more information, just reach out to us. We, we're here to help. And you know, us educators, what we live for is to, is to help people succeed. So just let us know how we can help and, and we'll be there just ready to work. So thank you for having us today, Barry. And then I'll pass it back on, on to you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I'm glad that you're here.
I'm glad that you're here. I'm going to take my moment to do an introduction. Someone here in the meeting with us from Miramar, Mira Mesa High School. Jennifer Kralvik is there. She works with food, nutrition, hospitality and tourism. And I'd really just like to have Jennifer step in and introduce herself. I'd really love to see Mira Mesa High School get more of a connection to this program and to Miramar College.
So ironically, I was just talking to Tanya in the chat about, because every year I I teach hospitality and tourism. And every year I have my students, because I am a college level class, I have my students come up with a restaurant concept. And they have to come up with a business plan along with the mission statement, the logo. They have to be able to know how to hire people, what are they looking for, what is their squad? All of that, we go through all of that and the students have to present in front of a panel of judges and evaluators. And it's all positive. It's not like you did this wrong, you did that wrong, but it's giving them suggestions on how to give a pitch, which is so perfect. I think I would just absolutely love it if Tanya, so I was already asking her in the chat if she would be interested in helping me out with my students here, probably in May, is what I'm looking at. But having that connection is just worth everything. And I usually end up having some of the town council members come and sit in on them. And it gives the students a real life experience as to what people are really looking for when they're trying to start up a business of their own. So it's, but mine is usually always a restaurant or a hotel concept.
I am happy to help. I love judging those competitions. They're so fun, they're so fun to watch what they come up with. And and I, you know, I'm sure there there's, I'm sure you've seen some really great pitches over the years and I can't wait. So I'm there, just let me know and I'll be there.
Yeah, for sure. Absolutely, but we love Miramar College. Of course, you know, we're totally connected in all ways. I'm sure you know all of our counselors and, you know, all of the things that Miramar, they put on all kinds of pro, you know, programs and and speaks and things like that for the students to get familiar with Miramar College before they get there. So this program, you're, sorry.
Oh, sorry, I was just going to say, yeah, we've brought your students over a few times. I've I've seen your students come to campus even and and so, yeah, I I think it's, we'll definitely have lots of ways we'll be working together. And I'll share with you information for any of them who do want to maybe just go take that next step and get into an incubator. We're happy to have them, you know.
Absolutely, that's wonderful.
Oh, yeah, great. Thank you, thank you for that introduction, Barry, too.
Thank you.
Excellent, does anyone else have a question for Professor Hertz? Any questions at all about Miramar College? I I say yes, Bernie Reinerston.
Yeah, I have a question, Barry. This is time. So on the twenty second of April, anybody can join that virtual meeting and attend?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. If you'd like, I can send the invitation for it at six PM, the will be the high school cohorts. So that's primarily geared to high school students, current high school students, seniors and juniors. And then at seven thirty PM, it's everyone. So I'll, if you if you wouldn't mind putting contact information in the chat, I can give you the the direct link to the invitation or I think I might have yours, actually.
I could, I'd like to make a comment, Barry, thank you. First of all, thank you, Dr. Lundberg and Tanya for coming to this meeting tonight. I I mentioned it about a month ago, when I was giving a report here to the town council. And it's great to get you, Wes, connected with the community as the new president. And Tanya, you're just doing amazing work. I remember your presentation to our board about a year ago. And to see it now and to see what, how it's grown and and flourished is really, really exciting. Entrepreneurship is something I'm very passionate about as a board member to support. All of our colleges are beginning to develop entrepreneurial programs for students. And really, it's a great way for for young people and anyone to come out of this pandemic and go set up a business and take an idea. So all of our colleges, City, Mira Mesa and Continuing Ed are making big commitments to entrepreneurial education. But it's really at Miramar and the rec program that's the shining star. And it's something I think the entire state is looking at as a way community colleges can be a real leader in entrepreneurial education. So thank you, Tanya, for coming to our district and and really creating something special that's making a big difference in our students' lives. Thank you both for being here.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, it means the world to say, here, you say that, thank you. And I have my contact information in the the chat, please. Anybody who would like more information, please do let let me know, reach out to me. Just happy to help.
Thank you both for being here tonight, telling us more about Miramar College as a whole, the rec program specifically, and we look forward to working with you and seeing more of you in the future.
Absolutely, thank you, Barry. And a couple of people shot me contact information. I'll be in touch, thank you so much. I'm I've been anxious, as as Trustee Reinerston pointed out, well, he may not have put it this way, but I've been anxious to make connections, you know, coming from from out of the area for so long. And now being back, I'm I'm even even more excited to make connections and see this college really grow and watch this community grow. So thank you, Bernie, for for your support as well.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on now to the government and community resources section. We'll start with the Mira Mesa Community Planning Group, Jeff Stevens.
Okay, um, so we did skip over the earlier stuff, approval of the minutes, president's report, we need to do anything there? If not, then I will, I will proceed. Okay, so we had an interesting planning group meeting last month. We had our biannual elections, semi annual, that is every two years. We elected three new members who all filled vacancies. These are all resident positions. The new members are Ian Kerman, Dorothy Lorenz and Andrew McClusickak. And then after that, we had a a presentation from John Leopard, representing Garden Communities on a substantial conformance review for Three Roots. So Garden Communities has purchased the the multifamily component of of Three Roots and they will be building that part of them. Garden Communities is the same company that built Casa Mira View. And so they came in, in order to do that, they have to show that they meet all the design requirements that's in the in the master plan. So they came in and did that and we voted to to approve it. So planning group's been fine. As I mentioned to Todd Gloria, there are some issues with the community plan update. The city is proposing things that are frankly rather extreme. I'm going to share my screen just to show what I'm talking about here. So this is what the city is proposing to do. All the areas that are numbered here are are housing densities, seventy three units per acre, fifty four, fifty four, hundred and nine. Basically, the idea is with housing in all of the shopping centers, included even these little shopping centers at the up on Commune Ruiz and way out on Mercy Road. This is a lot. To give you some idea, Casa Mira View is about two thousand units with their density of forty two units per acre. So all of these are higher density than that. And this is on top of whatever commercial would remain after they were to add this. The the totals are about twenty three thousand units. If you add up all these acres together, if they were to go in at the maximum densities proposed, that would be an increased population of the community of about fifty thousand people. Now, the the build out population, including Stone Creek, is some is a bit over ninety thousand. So this is like a fifty percent increase in the population of the community. So what's been concerning to me in particular is that there's been very little, if any, discussion of the impacts of this. Traffic impacts, impacts on public facilities, schools. And this went to planning commission last week. The city's planning commission and planning commission absolutely love this. So I'm quite concerned about this. I think, you know, maybe the city can somehow make this wonderful, but so far it's looking to me like they're basically adding as much housing as they possibly can into the shopping center areas, also in Serrano Mesa, which, you know, there's some issues with putting that much housing next to industrial also. But I just want to make people aware that this is what the city is is proposing and they're pushing it very hard, so we'll we'll see how things go from here. I think that's my report.
Thank you, Jeff. Does anyone have questions regarding the community plan update and the proposals that are being put forward right now?
Barry, it's Marv Miles.
Hi, Marv.
I think the one thing that we could add to that is everything that Jeff just talked about. There is no infrastructure improvement, there's no larger parks, there's no, you know, enlargement of how do we put all those people into the same footprint? And it's, nobody, the city doesn't have any answers. It's like, well, we'll just jam them in. So, yeah, that that's exactly right. And that's really the problem here. I mean, you know, we just approved some six thousand units in Carroll Canyon plus Casa Mira View, you know, eight thousand units total. We approved all those because they came with Parkland, they came with traffic studies and traffic mitigation. And so far, we've seen none of that for any of the new units. Maybe we can just move everything over on Miramar. So we're just really, you know, Miramar College got so much open space over there. We can just fill in that pool and glad to see you're here, Wes, I'm like that.
Wes, thank you for your talk, I liked it too.
Thanks, Marv, anyone else? I have a question from chat, says who exactly is driving this latest expansion in Mira Mesa?
It's the city, the city is trying to comply with state requirements for adding to the housing supply. It's not developer driven, there aren't developers who are coming in and saying they really want to build all this. They may not, you know, the density is there, although it said seventy three units per acre on that. It's actually zero to seventy three units per acre. So they push this through and they didn't have buy in from the developer. You have anywhere between zero and twenty three thousand units added, which, you know, doesn't doesn't do much for the viability of the community plan.
And just one mention I'll say is that about three years ago, the whole state of California approved, we have a number of names for accessory dwelling unit called be called a granny flat, things like that. So every property in the state of California can build a granny flat in your backyard. Now, it's in the process right now that they're looking at, let's make it four units per lot. So that's coming down the pike, so getting more people, more density. And, you know, and then we're going to talk about fresh water, we're going to get that and sewer connections and things like that. So it's, you know, it's a multi issue.
I I have a question for Marvin, if may ask.
Yes.
Yeah, you talk of granny flats, is that the regulation which is coming together, is that is forcing the house pricing going high? In your opinion?
Supply and demand. People love it here, so. But of course, I'm I'm a little different, I've been a realtor for forty five years. So we've always had demand in San Diego. So, you know, it's 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 a challenge. We have very little inventory and a lot of demand.
Yeah, that's true.
Jennifer, no.
I was just going to ask a really quick question because I know you guys will know and I don't know. And everybody says something different. What is going in over there by where the Firestone was? Do we know?
Danielle, I think knows the answer to that one. Unmute yourself.
Danielle, we can't hear you.
I'm trying to unmute and it's been uncooperative. Hi, Jennifer. You that asked the question?
Oh, yeah, I was just curious because I've heard several different things and I'm just like, I'll find out for sure. What is going in over there where the Firestone was taken down?
That the the dirt will be raised up to the level of MoMo Paradise. So that's the same level as Michael's. And then there will be shrubbery and benches and small shops. One for sure is summary bakery is coming, Korean, Japanese style bakery. And a coffee place is also been already said. There's another place that hasn't been finalized, a lot of it's in negotiations and people don't realize that you can't, they tell me things and tell me not to say anything until they Yeah, so imagine the little shop kiosks like in Fashion Valley, Mission Valley, where you walk around and there's these little shops. There is going to be a spectrum, but it's not going to be as large as the AT&amp;T across the street.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks, Danielle.
Welcome.
All right, what I like to do is encourage everybody to attend the planning group Zoom if you can. We're getting down to the critical time for the new community plan. And it's important to make sure that you know what's being presented by the city and speak up if it's not something you agree with or if it's something you support, we need to know that also.
Two, two weeks from today, by the way, same same time, sort of the same place and it will be another Zoom meeting.
Exactly, and we will be putting the announcement out there with the link to join.
I think Jeff can also bring up that Cox is coming into the Mira Mesa business area. And they feel very strongly they're going to make a big dent in the AT&amp;T program out again, all along Miramar Road into that business area. Just give you heads up, so.
Right, we approved that plan last, at the last meeting.
And I found out accidentally that they're coming through that Miramar area at the same time as the Pure Water Project is getting started, was quite a surprise to the Pure Water folks. So hopefully, we've started a conversation. I just show fractal here from the community, the Community Recreation Group. Okay, we'll move on to Mira Mesa Branch Library, Ina Gibson.
Good evening. Happy Monday. Great meeting so far, I'm gonna be as quick as I can. I'm sure all of you are wondering about the library because we get questions every day from folks. We essentially have had no change in service with the changing levels of, you know, the red, purple, the tiers. We really never left the red tier. So we have very limited services inside, we are still doing the the whole pickup service. We are still doing readers advisory. We are help, happy to help you get anything you need from the library, whether you can get in and get it yourself or whether we can bring it to you. We've expanded our eBooks. We do have a lot of like activity kits and craft kits for the kids and families for that matter. I know that many of you miss browsing, we're working on a way to do that safely. And I don't know what that's going to look like or when that's going to start. But you could see some small changes as early as late April to mid-May. The summer reading will be virtual, the programming and such. So there probably won't be widespread, big programming like we used to do in the library for a while. But we will probably expand our virtual programming. We're thinking about starting some kind of virtual chess club. We have an exciting self published book about the San Diego library system. It's bilingual, it's in both English and Spanish. It's called Odie's Library Day. It's called Odie's Library Day. And it was illustrated by one of our own and it was written by one of our own. And so that will be coming soon. So that's a sneak peek at something that is coming out. It looks beautiful from what I've seen. We do have for April is National Poetry Month. So our craft kit, activity kit for the month is a blackout poetry kit. Instructions, a few sheets to try your hand at this. We're encouraging all ages to try it. It's kind of therapeutic and it kind of gets creative juices flowing. If you're by the library and stop, you can see some examples in our, in our window. You can also Google blackout poetry to find out what it's all about. It's sometimes called found poetry. Because you don't start with a blank sheet. You start with a printed text. And you look through and you read over and you get a feel for some anchor words that you would like to form the basis of a creative expression, i.e. poetry. And you, once you have all the words in order in place, you basically keep those in and you blackout color over, do something to the other words to make them disappear and you have a poem. We have a library survey that we're inviting the community to partake in. There are multi-language versions, both online and on paper. You can stop by the library to pick one up. You can go to support mylibrary.org and click on the take the survey now button. It's very simple. It's very straightforward. And basically we are trying to get some community input into the library master plan to decide what and how we're going to divvy up resources and spread those resources out in an equitable way and make them as user friendly and as user focused as possible. Finally, one little tidbit. We had a soft sort of advertised used book sale because I know that's another question we get asked about a lot. Our friends kind of put up a tent essentially in our plaza area and sold books out of boxes. It was very well attended. I think those that did come appreciated it. I know that they enjoyed it enough and felt like it was worth their while. So they will be doing it again. So I invite you to be part of our Facebook group page. We do advertise on our Facebook page. Watch next door for the next used book sale. And we also had the, the information the mirror talked about, like how to apply for various and sundry relief funds and subsidies for your rent, et cetera. We have information on that and some other resources. So feel free to stop by the library, check out the webpage for that. Are there any questions? I know I went through that quickly, but I also know it's very late. And I see people yawning.
Thank you, Ina.
You're welcome. See us at the library.
All right, Michael Spencer, Scripps Mesa fireworks. Are you here?
He was here.
Yeah. All right, Mira Mesa Cluster Schools Council, Bob Turner. All right, we'll move on now to elected officials and I've been asked if everyone will indulge. We're going to do a little line jumping from our usual order. From council member Kate's office, Luis Blair, he has a commitment and is stuck around to talk with us. So Luis, do you want to jump in?
Absolutely. Thanks, Barry. Appreciate the time. Wanted to highlight two events we're doing. One, sure if the mayor brought this up, but we're re-hosting a joint symposium with the convoy district. A public safety symposium regarding our Asian American small businesses. And that was on this Thursday, April 8, 2:00 PM at the Dixieland Lumber parking lot located at 4888 Convoy Street. I can send a copy of the flyer over to Barry if she hasn't already received it yet, but we're getting together with the mayor, our district attorney, Summer Stephan, and our chief of police, Dave Disly, to discuss how we can help provide solutions and support local, small API businesses. So highly encourage you to attend that event. We look forward to any kind of feedback and it's being held in convoy, but obviously Mira Mesa has got a whole lot of those businesses that are being affected a lot during this pandemic. So we'd love to have the support for that event coming up this week.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Next up, we have San Diego Unified School District Board Member Sabrina Bozzo.
Good evening. Good to see everyone again. I'll keep it short because I know the hour is late. I just wanted to give a quick update with regard to school reopening. I think all of you are probably aware. Next week, the schools are going to be starting back Monday, April 12th. And it's going to be district wide and the, the agreement is to have students in place two days a week. So it'd be like 50% of the class two days and then the other 50%, the other two days. But depending on how many students are coming back, some schools are able to do all four days. It just also really depends on the sizes of the classrooms. Again, and how many students are, they're anticipating coming back. I know at the high school level, they are going to do two days next this coming week, but then they're hoping to, to then move to four days, depending on how many students come back. Because we are still going to be having the opportunity for students to be on Zoom if they prefer. So you know, I, I think if there's any parents out there or others that are going to be, you know, involved in this process to just be, be a little patient right now that I just see that, that so much going on behind the scenes to make this happen because it's not like a normal starting school, as many of you can imagine. There's just so much that has to go into, you know, getting this up and running. So it's going to be, you know, probably not completely smooth coming out. You know, and again, if there's any students that exhibit symptoms, the whole process for, you know, potentially having to shut down classes. I mean, there's, so there's a lot that they're trying to do, but the, the, the primary focus is to keep our students safe and healthy. And, and so, yeah, it's, we're, we're coming up on next Monday for that. And also the Cindy Martin, our, who was our superintendent, I don't know if, I don't know what to call her right now. We have an acting superintendent in her place because as many of you know, she is being considered for, to be the deputy education secretary at the, the federal level, reporting to the White House. And she had her Senate confirmation hearing. I think it was two weeks ago now. I was able to watch online and it was pretty, pretty amazing. I've, I mean, I've watched Senate confirmation hearings, but I've never known someone to be the person being, you know, in the hearing and she said it was like probably one of the stress, most stressful things she's ever done in her life. And I can imagine. But I, you know, she did a wonderful job. And I think now it's just, you know, going through the final process. And, you know, to get her confirmed. And yeah, just a lot going on right now. And oh, also I was going to add, when we were talking about the community colleges, that we've also been, we had a meeting, it was early part of March with the Community College District Board. And that was wonderful. There's a lot of ways that Sandy Unified is partnering with the college district and will be, they're continuing to work on those partnerships. And this summer, because of some of the cares funds that are being provided at, from the federal level, is going to be utilized towards summer programs. And they're going to be partnering with the community college to offer some of those programs as well as San Diego Foundation to offer a variety of like enrichment programs for students this summer to make up, to hopefully help with making up with some, for some of the learning loss over this past year. So that's a kind of a short summary of what's happening. And I can leave my email in the chat. Yeah. If anyone had, or if anyone has any questions for me now as well, that's fine. But I know, like I said, we probably need to move things along, but I will, please feel free to get ahold of me, you know, through email and thanks for having me.
Thank you, Sabrina. We'll look for that in the chat.
Barry, can I ask a quick question to Sabrina?
Yes.
Yeah. Hi Sabrina, thanks for the update. I have two quick questions for you. You don't have the complete answer yet. But one is that based on what you have seen the enrollment process right now for upcoming session, what percentage of students have opted for pure virtual versus hybrid program?
So that's a really good question. And I've actually asked that question. I went on a walkthrough at Spreakles Elementary in University City. And I've been talking to Lamont Jackson, the acting superintendent and principals, other principals. I was on the Hage PTA. Their meeting last week, their Zoom meeting. And it really varies. But I would say in our area, for example, Spreakles is expecting about 90% back. And I think at Hage, they said it was going to be between 60 and 70%. So I would say in the more, as you go more north of the eight, you're getting higher numbers of students back, specifically in areas like La Jolla, Scripps Ranch, but also you see, and then Mira Mesa would be like a little less, but still fairly high. And so if you're now, as you're going down more like South San Diego, where the case rates are still very high. And, you know, there's a lot of people that are still very concerned about transmission rates. It's probably closer to 40 or 50%.
I see. And the second question, thanks for that. And the second question is that, do you see that the district is planning any permanent changes or modifications to, to impart education moving forward based on what, what we have gone through with the COVID? In a, on a permanent basis or on a, at least temporary basis in the next few years?
Yeah, no, that's a really good question. And I think they have, I think it's almost impossible not for them, for them not to make changes. You know, I mean, I don't think we want to go back to just what we were all doing before. We want to, of course, go back to live classes, but we want to also incorporate a lot of the technology that they've been able to utilize to help with students. For example, the tutoring program that we started here in Mira Mesa was completely virtual and it was free. Free volunteer tutoring program. And I don't see, you know, and I, so I've been really trying to get that, that program spread out more throughout the district. And that's something that we probably would never would have, I mean, at some point, but you know, I certainly wouldn't have been a part of a Zoom, you know, tutoring program if we hadn't been thrown into a pandemic. So I, I know that they're definitely trying to utilize resources because now all the students have their own, their own tablets. That was one of the things that, that the items that was provided to each student. So the resources that we can provide with that are, you know, would be wonderful. So I know they are definitely looking into ways to still provide utilizing, I guess, more virtual resources, but also getting students back in the classroom as well.
No, thank you very much, Sabrina. And hope you, and hope you are reachable for any, any further questions, right?
Absolutely. It's just ask Bozzo at sandy.net.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Sabrina. Next, from the Community College District Board Member Bernie Reinderson.
Thank you. There's not much that I want to add, everyone, except that I do want to highlight that we have announced to the next chancellor of the San Diego Community College District will be, and that's Dr. Carlos Turner Cortez. Carlos will be starting in that position on July the first. He's currently the president of our continue, a college of continuing education. He's been with the district for six years and has done some amazing work for students in the college of continuing education, really making our career tech programs a statewide leader and creating online programs and online career tech programs and entrepreneurial programs, as I mentioned before. Carlos's story was highlighted in the San Diego Union Tribune on Sunday. So if you didn't see that article, go to the UT website and read all about Carlos and really his amazing background and the journey that he's taken in his life to become now the chancellor of the San Diego Community College District. We will be, of course, missing the people's chancellor, Constance Carroll for the amazing work that she has done, but in September, we'll be having a, a, an event honoring her and raising money for our promise program, which provides scholars, scholarships to several thousand students in our district. And that's a program that Chancellor Carroll got started. And we'll be recognizing her achievements and raising money for the promise program at an event in September. I'll make sure to let you all know about that. But anyway, join me in welcoming Dr. Carlos Turner Cortez is our next chancellor effective July the first. And other than that, I'll leave it at that. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Bernie. From county supervisor Tara Lawson Reamer's office, Evelyn Andrade.
Hi, everyone. Good to see you all again. I just have a few updates since the last time I saw you. A couple of weeks ago, the supervisor voted to secure over 2,000 acres of land in Campo. That's going to be set aside for environmental conservation. This land's going to help us balance our natural habitat with our communities. It's the largest acquisition that the county has had in years, and we're really excited to add it to our multiple species conservation program. It's going to make up about 10% of that entire program. And so we're really excited to, to have done that. Additionally, the supervisor and the board have provided a lot of support for renters or small businesses and vulnerable communities throughout the pandemic. Now we're adding San Diego's youth to that list. So supervisor Lawson Reamer proposed a, the creation of a youth environmental recreation corps. And that was just approved a couple of weeks ago as well. It's going to allow low income youth from 16 to 24 to be eligible for employment opportunities within county departments as well as nonprofits throughout the county. So we're really excited about that. Additionally, we're going to be having a smart justice forum this Wednesday, and we're hoping that all of you will join. I'll be sure to put a link in the chat for that where you can register. In March, the county unanimously passed Supervisor Lawson Reamer's phone access reform for incarcerated people and their families. And this is, we see this as a critical first step, but there's a lot of work that remains to be done in the criminal justice system. And so we're hoping that you all will join us to discuss what are next steps in that movement. And that's it. We have a big agenda for tomorrow and Wednesday, and I look forward to bringing all updates on next month. Thank you.
Thank you, Evelyn. From the Assemblyman Brian Mainshine's office is Rob Newsen here. Okay. Didn't think I saw him. State Senator Tony Atkins' office, Diana Lara.
She was here.
Well, Congressman Scott Peters' office, Anthony Nguyen.
Good evening, everyone. A few updates from our office. So on March 12th, the congressman supported and the House passed what's called the VA Vaccine Act. So this expands the Department of Veterans Affairs to provide COVID vaccines to all veterans as well as their caregivers and spouse are eligible as well. So if you know anyone that's still looking to get the vaccine and they are married to a veteran, know that they can go ahead and get their vaccine through the VA. Same thing for the caregivers. Last Sunday, March 28th, the congressman released a video message in recognition of National Vietnam War Veterans Day, which is observed on Monday, March 29th. And so this day honors the withdrawal of the last combat troops from Vietnam in 1973 and the arrival of the last prisoners of war held in North Vietnam on American soil. So I'll include a video of that link on the chat. And I know that in the community here, we do have some who are Vietnam War veterans. So thank you for their service and their sacrifice. A couple of weeks ago, on March 23rd, the congressman hosted a virtual roundtable here in San Diego with local Asian American Pacific Islanders, Islanders community on the increasing rates of anti-Asian harassment and violence. And so the speakers that we invited discussed their personal stories, the experience and the fear that they have here in our community. In our congressional district, the 52nd congressional district, about one in four people are of API descent. And so if you want to learn more about the issue and how you can help, I'm going to include the video of that event as well. And just, you know, be on the lookout for our neighbors and let's keep ours community safe. And tomorrow. And tomorrow, the congressman will be hosting a virtual event to provide information about the US Small Business Administration Shuttered Venue Operators Grant. So this grant is for the shuttered entertainment business or venue. So these will be your large operators or theatrical producers. I guess an example would be the San Diego Symphony. So these companies or the industries were the first to close when COVID happened. And they will probably be the last to be reopened. And so this grant is a way to help that particular business. So if you know anyone that's in that business, let them know that there will be an info session tonight or tomorrow, April the 6th from 3:00 to 4:00. And I will include more information about the grant as well as the link to that event as well. And then lastly, I know Mayor Gloria mentioned about the updates about the migrant girls at the San Diego Convention Center. I guess a few calls that we've been getting are how can people donate? So I will include information about the South Bay Community Services. If you want to donate in-kind gifts and things like that too. Let me know if you have any questions, but I will include all the information that I just discussed in the chat.
Thank you Anthony. We have two speakers who have signed up for the open forum session. First up is Tommy Howe.
Thank you Barry, I appreciate it. It's great to see everyone, planning commissioner Tommy Howe. It was great to hear about Miramar College. I live right around the corner from Miramar College, kind of on the other side from Wagon High Middle School. Anyway, it's great to see everyone. You may recall that I ran for San Diego City Council District 6, including us in Mira Mesa back in 2018 as the endorsed Democratic candidate. Very pleased to announce that I'm running again for the District 6 seat in 2022. I just want to go over a couple of issues if you'll indulge me at this late hour. One of which is is public safety. We still have a real crisis with street racing here in Mira Mesa. It doesn't just affect us with the parking lots at Miramar. It also affects Camino Ruiz and where Carroll Canyon crosses. This is a problem also in Kearney Mesa and in Claremont as well. As your District 3 Planning Commissioner, I'll make some remarks about my March 8th letter to the city's Human Relations Commission and the need for neighborhood meetings citywide on the anti-Asian intimidation and harassment and violence that Anthony was talking about. I'll be doing that at the Human Relations Commission's next meeting on the 21st. I invite you to join us there. As Jeff indicated, the city has come up with some questionable approaches to housing in our community, especially with some fuzzy math and statistics. Part of being a candidate and running to be your council member is ensuring that you and our neighbors aren't left in the dark on these kinds of plans and that you have an effective contact at City Hall. We already have 6,500 new units going online as Casimir View is completed, as Stone Creek is finalized, as Three Roots gets built and is underway. A lot of this development is predicated on finishing Carroll Canyon Road. I'll make it my job to ensure that road is appropriately finished to completion and effectiveness. In addition to rebuilding Gold Coast and Parkdale, infrastructure also clearly important. Gold Coast and Parkdale are not unique, but they are critical arterials. The Perseus and Fort Real are in rough shape too. You can't just give these roads a new layer of asphalt. They need to be rebuilt from the ground up. I've been saying that for years. I'm going to continue talking about that. The city needs to truly invest in itself, also with the lack of competitiveness with a lot of our jobs. We have a lot of vacant positions with the city. That's not appropriate. I'm the only dedicated environmentalist running for council this cycle. Maintaining the health of our canyons and watersheds is critical. Overall, the city is lacking a vision, but as you can see, the city is in a very reactive mode right now. While downtown gives itself convention centers and stadiums and symphony halls, we need streetlights. We need our roads rebuilt in addition to jobs. We want the epicenter up and running again. We want walkable neighborhoods, safe streets and healthy canyons. That's why I say neighborhoods first. I hope you'll join me. Tommy Howe, H-O-U-G-H, Neighborhoods First. My website is tommyhowe.com. If that's a little bit too much of a mouthful, you can go with TommyD6.com. I'll put my contact information in the chat. Thank you very much Barry. Have a great night, everyone.
Thank you Tommy. And next Kent Lee.
Good evening, everyone. So it's nice to see a lot of friends and colleagues here tonight. For those who I haven't met, my name is Kent Lee. Just wanted to share with all of you tonight that I am running for San Diego City Council, which is to represent District 6. And just maybe a little bit of an introduction, I am a first generation immigrant. My parents came to the United States as refugees from Vietnam and Burma in search of a better life. Their challenges helped me shape my belief in serving our communities as a core part of my own life. My wife and I met at UCSD and we're actually raising our two young children right here in Mira Mesa. Professionally, I'm the executive director of Pacific Arts Movement, where we've showcased stories that represent the beauty of our diverse and multicultural communities, including at the Edwards and here in Mira Mesa. I've worked to develop youth leadership through the Boy Scouts of America. I've supported mom and pop, small business owners through events like our D6 Night Market. And finally, I've served on our, as a board member of our Mira Mesa Community Planning Group for over eight years. In the past year, especially with COVID-19, I've been serving as the co-chair of the San Diego Asian Pacific Islander Coalition, which works with partners across the city and the county to fight hatred and racism impacting our API communities. I'm running for city council because I really want to build a stronger, more compassionate, more inclusive San Diego. And I believe in ensuring that the diverse voices of our neighborhoods and communities, which include all of your voices, are represented down at City Hall. So I'm here because I've spent my years on the ground, working on behalf of families, on small businesses, as a part of each of our local neighborhoods in D6. And I want to ensure that our diverse voices are represented, not just with a voice, but also a seat at the table. So if you have a chance, I'm actually going to be launching our campaign shortly and want to encourage everyone to visit our site as well and learn more and sign up for updates. I'll leave the link below, but you can visit it at kentleeforsd.com. Thanks so much, everyone, and look forward to speaking with you soon.
Thank you Kent. We are down to committee reports and owing to the hour, I'll just ask really quickly. Banner District, do we have a report?
Yes, just really quick, I just wanted to kind of update you guys on that. So as you've driven down Mira Mesa Boulevard, I think you guys have seen about 40 absolutely beautiful banners that are like red and orange and purple. And those were But Together by Mitsley, celebrating Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. It highlights Mira Mesa on there, the D6 Council. So they're beautiful, they're going to be up there for April and May. And then after that, Chris Kate's office contacted me. Thank you to you Barry for making that contact. And they are going to be celebrating Philippine, Philippines Nurse Association of San Diego. So they are also having some banners made and those are going to be going up in June. So it's nice to have a little bit of a different look for a while. And both those organizations are paying for everything to have them printed and done and put up. So I just kind of wanted to let you guys know that that's what's going to be going up. Unfortunately, we do not get to put up the Del Mar or the county fair ones this year. So hopefully next year, those banners, the pictures were taken of the students last year. I think they're going to use those same banners for next year. So we'll see what happens on that one. And then I just wanted to thank Marv Miles for donating to our homeless care kits that my leadership students are doing at Mira Mesa High School. We're putting together about 50 to 75 homeless care kits for the homeless that are going to be delivered April 18th. And they're going to be assembling those and Marv donated some money for that, for us to get some supplies. Vons also donated. We're also waiting for a grant to come through. Danielle also donated a whole bunch of supplies, so thank you to all of you. And it's not too late to donate. If you've got travel sizes of things, if you want to donate non-perishable foods, that would be great. Money is always good. So thank you, and that is it for my report.
So I'm assuming that the check cleared, is that what you're saying?
Yes, it did. Thank you, Marv.
Thanks Jennifer. I'm going to defer the 4th of July report till we have something a little more substantial. Everybody knows that our fun day and parade have been suspended again. We're trying to pivot and do something. So hopefully in the next two weeks, we'll have a bit of an announcement. Brandy, are you here for membership?
Barry, can I ask quickly to Jennifer, how can we donate as in a link or something?
No, there isn't. You could just, I can put my email in the chat. And you could just email me and I can give you my address if you want to do it that way. Unfortunately, that's really the only way is literally we are taking that money. And I'm letting the kids pick some ownership and actually purchase the items and then provide me with the receipt.
Okay, cool. Yeah, please send us to, we'll like to donate some some.
Wonderful, I will put that in the chat. Thank you.
Excellent. I thank everyone for being here tonight. Invite all of you to send your links and your information. You can send that to the Mira Mesa Town Council. We can share that again on our Facebook and our website. I think we generally use the issues at miramestatowncouncil.org and we can help you with publicizing what's going on. I appreciate everyone staying with us till nine o'clock tonight. Have a great night.
I have to say something.
Yes, yes.
We have scholarship opportunity for all graduating high school seniors who are Mira Mesa residents and have enjoyed the participating in community volunteering. And they are encouraged to apply this year's college scholarship award. Usually we give three scholarship awards, each $1,000. And donation, and we also, we are looking for the donation and donation to Mira Mesa Town Council. To the Mira Mesa Community Foundation. And this is also a text detectable. Yeah, this is the announcement and we are looking forward to. And every information is on the website, miramestatowncouncil.org.
And the link is on the Facebook as well as the website. We invite everyone to help us support three students through scholarships. And thank you.
Send that to me, I can give that right to the counselors at the high school.
Application, yeah.
Yeah, if you haven't already, I can get that to the counselors.
Do we have anything else for the evening?
Are we also looking for the newsletter editor, Barry?
We're going to have a discussion about that at the board meeting next week. And Danielle, I saw your hand up.
Just about the D6 virtual market night, May 15th. So you got down May 15th and you'll get more information coming. It's from 6:00 to 7:00, it'll be virtual. That's all I have.
Excellent. All right, thank you. And thank you again to our guests. The mayor has left. Well, that's Tanya, thank you for a wonderful presentation. We look forward to doing more with you.
Thank you, we do too. Thank you very much for having us.
Yeah, thank you.
Everyone take care and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye.
Thanks everyone, good night.
Good night. I have to remember to grab everything off the chat though.
I'll keep, I'll keep it on for a minute or two.
Thank you. You know, I knew that are still here, I jumped in to join Jeff on his screen. My screen somehow went dark.
I was gonna say, Jeff has two heads.
Yes.
One brain, two brains, which is.
Pam, how far apart do you have to stay so that it doesn't echo?
Different rooms works out okay. Same room doesn't work. But.
Awesome. All right, I got that off of the chat there. I was, I just learned that those three little dots at the bottom by the chat, you can download the entire chat. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, took me, took me, took me long enough to figure that out, but now I have it. So thank you again for having me.
Well, thank you so much for joining us. It was wonderful.
I really appreciate it. All right, everyone, good night.
You.
Good seeing everyone tonight.
Good seeing you.